All right, it is 8:30 a.m. We will call the meeting to order. Welcome, commissioners, guests, staff, everyone else. I will ask Deputy Clerk McCumber to call the roll, please.
Good morning, Commissioner. About the attendance, we'll call it. Commissioner? Breevy. Boujack. President. Burle.
Yes, here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Diaz. Vice Chair Green.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Coleman. LeGrand. McLeod.
Here.
Merchant.
Here.
Oliver King.
Here.
Pakla.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Sparks.
Present.
Teal.
Here.
Wooden.
Here.
Steck. Mr. Chair, you have 15 present six F's. You have a four.
Thank you. I will now call on Commissioner DeBoer to give the invocation.
And then you can try to figure it out for yourself. So, me, being the homeschool mom I am, I'm like, oh, I could figure out all of these fun classes. We could look at Hillsdale classes. We could look at all of this one. She's like, Mom, why don't we just read it? I'm like, oh, yeah, let's just, let's just read it. And so, my daughter and I are going through and reading the Bible. And I would encourage you, with the wisdom of a 10-year-old, if you've never read this book, this is worth reading. And it makes life make sense. And if you don't know Jesus Christ as your Lord and Savior, read this book. Learn about Him, because it will help make life make sense. So, I just have a quick verse, which is Proverbs 3:5 through 6. "Trust in the Lord with all your heart, and lean not on your own understanding; in all your ways submit to Him, and He will make your path straight." Let's pray. Father, we come before you, and we admit our utter need for you. We need your wisdom. We need your guidance. We need your direction. We need your help. Please humble us. Please help us. Please forgive us for the many wrongdoings we have done. In it's the name of the Lord Jesus Christ we pray, amen.
And to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner DeBoer. You may notice that Chair Steck is absent today. He was unable to make it. I am trying my best to fill his very big shoes as the vice chair of the board. So, we will move on to agenda item number five, which is the special orders of business. We have public hearings, three of them today. The first two are annexations. So, normally I open.
You open.
Okay. I will move, I will open the public hearing on the Village of Sparta annexation petition. Is there anyone that wishes to make a statement to the board or a question to the board on the public hearing for the Village of Sparta? Yes, please. We have Jim Lauer, who is the city, or the, I'm sorry, the village manager, correct?
That's correct, Chairman. Thank you. Appreciate it.
For Sparta. Thank you for being here.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chairman Green. And commissioners, I'll be fairly brief, straightforward request you have in front of you, nobody's opposing it that we're aware of. Annexation requests for villages go in front of the Board of Commissioners. As you know, there's a different process for city and township. So, basically, the property owner wants to become part of the village for the purposes of village services, water, sewer, those kinds of things. It's surrounded by village property already, and would be a nice addition to the village. And like I said, I don't think anyone's opposing it. So, be happy to take any questions if there are any, but that's, that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comment on the Village of Sparta annexation petition? I see none. I will, do I need a motion to close the public hearing? I would like to entertain a motion. Moved by Commissioner Teal, supported by Commissioner DeBoer. And that is a voice vote. So, all in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. The public hearing is closed. We'll move on to the quite similar request from the Village of Kent City. I will open the public hearing for the Village of Kent City annexation petition. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on the question regarding the Village of Kent City? I don't see anyone. With that, I would entertain a motion to close. Commissioner Teal moves to close. Commissioner Burle, seconds. This again is a voice vote. Everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. The public hearing on Kent City is closed. We now have a public hearing on the Parks Master Plan, and I will open that public hearing now. Is there anyone that wishes to give comment on the Parks Master Plan? We have Ben Swayze, Kent County Parks Director. Good morning, Ben.
Good morning. Thank you, Vice Chair. Just want to mention, this is another step in a multi-phase process to get through this. So, we have the public hearing today. We'll be addressing the plan in the finance, physical resources meeting next week, and then ultimately comes back in front of the board for potential approval at the next meeting. So, it's still a living document at this point. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look it over or watch the PowerPoint presentation, which was a lot harder to put together than I thought, trying to narrate that. But it's, it's a pretty long document. If you're going to focus on one area, I would say focus on the goals and objectives, because that's really what will kind of guide us over the next five years. And I tried to make a couple of points through the process, that it's not a hard and fast roadmap, right? So, just because something's in the master plan doesn't mean that it'll get done. Something that, just because something's not in the master plan doesn't mean that it won't get done. So, I kind of juxtapose that against the zoo master plan that you guys had worked on earlier in the year. So, there's always an opportunity to amend it, move in different directions. Just really gives us a roadmap as a department to operate the plan over the next five years. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have now. And of course, if you have any questions between now and the next meeting, I'm more than happy to meet with you as well.
Technically, this is a public hearing, so we shouldn't have any back and forth between Ben and the commissioners. But if there are questions from commissioners, I'd be happy to intervene to take care of that. Is any commissioner, any questions on the, on this question? I don't see any. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
I'd like a motion to close the public hearing, please. Moved by Commissioner Teal, supported by Commissioner Wooden. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. The public hearing is closed. Ben, I wanted to say thanks for your presentation. Now, my YouTube is recommending all kinds of videos about parks for me, so I appreciate that. We'll move on to our next item, public comment, related only to agenda action items. Just a reminder, members of the public have three minutes to address the board, and please direct those to myself. Pastor Scott, please come forward. Please state your name and address.
Daniel Scott. You need my address?
Yes, please.
1204 Hovee. Some say Hovee. We say Hovee. Southwest. Thank you for this opportunity, and greetings to all of you again. And my real identification again is I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you, Commissioner DeBoer, for that very moving and inspiring invocation. I agree with you 100%. Ready by five. That's what I'd like to address once again, as I did last time I was here. But a few other truths to support the fact that we should include from conception, the protection of these dear children. I just heard this, or I read this. This information came to mind from the National Library of Medicine. Ninety-six percent of biologists, from 1,058 academic institutions around the world, affirm, affirm that life begins at conception. That was surprising, that, that would be true. Also, a child's heart, in the womb, starts beating at 22 days. And again, that's why, last time I was here, I shared from Psalm 139, where David says, "I have been knit together in the womb. The Lord knows my individual parts." And they're registered in a book, somewhere in heaven. Must be a big book, because of all the billions of people that have lived. So, again, I support any support, financial support for families that need assistance. I'm already paying taxes for that. But I would hope, if you have a voice, if you have any way to support, even from birth, and of course, I would say from conception. You did take an oath to support the Constitution of the United States. I have a copy here in front of me. It includes the general welfare of our posterity. And according to Webster, posterity means offspring, children. So, you vowed to speak up, support all you can, and just want to remind you of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Scott. Are there other members of the public that wish to address the board this morning on agenda items only? I don't see any, so thank you. We will move on to the consent agenda, item seven. I will call on Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Chair. I move the consent agenda.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Teal. This is a roll call vote. Deputy Clerk McCumber, please call the roll.
On the passage of the consent agenda, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Burle.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Here, yes.
Hildebrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Steck. Mr. Chair, you have 17 yays, zero nays. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you very much. We move on to item eight, which is resolutions, and I call on Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, Vice Chair Green. I move resolution number 34 of today's date.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Sparks. This is a voice vote. Is there any discussion on this prior to the vote? I think we got a good overview from Mr. Lauer from the Village of Sparta, but if there's any discussion from the board. Seeing none, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wooden.
Just real briefly, I believe our administrator said the last time we had an annexation request, that that was the first time in 30 years, and it'll be 30 years till we see the next one. So, if he can also say, you know, that the Lions making the semifinals was the first time in 30 years, and that it'll be 30 more years, we'd really appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you. Anyone else? I see none. This is, as I said, a voice vote. Clerk, please call the roll. Or, I'm sorry. I'm new here. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We move on to resolution B, and I will again call on Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, Vice Chair Green. I move resolution number 35 of today's date.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Burle. Any discussion? I see none. This is a voice vote, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We will now move to resolution C, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move resolution 36 of today's date. It's the diaper bank program with the community action.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Pakla. Any discussion? Yes. Commissioner Hennessy.
I don't recall ever receiving a grants for something as practical, useful, absolutely needed for our families having children. I think this is wonderful. This is, we have, Commissioner Teal once led a diaper drive among commissioners, but, you know, this is just absolutely a necessity, and I'm glad to see this, these funds come through.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I would just echo that, and I recall, I don't remember if it was KCCA or Health Department, because it's a collaboration here, that spotted these monies, you know, out there that we weren't taking advantage of, and, and did all the work for this grant, and so just kudos to whoever was involved in that. Appreciate it.
All right. Any other discussion? This is again a voice vote, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We move on to item eight D, and I will call on minority vice chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I move resolution 37, the inner-urban transit partnership grant for 2024, coming to us from the Community Action Agency.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Any discussion? Seeing none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. We will move to resolution letter E, and I will call on Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. It is my pleasure to move resolution 38 of today's date, a resolution to accept and appropriate unrestricted revenue from consumers and DTE for energy reimbursements. It comes to us from Kent County Community Action.
Supported by Commissioner Pakla. Any discussion on this item? Dish or Wooden?
Just, I said this in finance, but just a real quick congratulations again to KCCA for figuring, for being able to systematize their rebate collection with DTE. That's been a struggle for them for a while, and as a result, they're now, you know, this $20,000 is actually probably just going to be the beginning. Right now, they're, they're expecting an additional $130,000 in unrestricted revenues in rebates this year. For a budget of KCCA, that's, that's pretty monumental, especially when it comes to unrestricted dollars, so we're really appreciative, and great work.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. This is again a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We will move to item F, and I will call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Vice Chair Green. I'd like to move resolution 39 of today's date, add on point seven, FTE outreach worker position for City of Grand Rapids Hutt grant, brought to us by the Health Department.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Any discussion? Seeing none. This is again a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We will move to item G, letter G, and I will call on Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. It is my pleasure to move resolution 40 of today's date, an amendment to the MDHHS Comprehensive Agreement for Sewer Network Program, comes to us from the Health Department.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Oliver King. Is there any discussion? I will say that there was a previously identified conflict from Commissioner Pakla and minority vice chair McLeod. They will be abstaining. That's been cleared with myself and with our legal counsel prior. Is there any discussion further? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. This is a roll call vote. I'm still new here, guys. I will call on Deputy Clerk McCumber to call the roll.
On the passage of resolution 40, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Burle.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Hennessy.
Yes.
Hildebrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Pakla.
Abstain.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Steck. Mr. Chair, you have 15 yays, zero nays, two abstentions. The motion passes.
Thank you. We will move to item H. I will again call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair.
I'd like to move resolution 41 of today's date, the ready-by-five allocation from the administrator's office.
Supported by Commissioner Teal. Any discussion? Seeing none. This is again a roll call vote. I will call on the clerk to call the roll.
On the passage of resolution 41, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Burle.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Hennessy.
Yes.
Hildebrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Steck. Mr. Chair, you have 17 yays, zero nays. The motion passes.
Thank you. We will move on to agenda item number nine. This is our second opportunity for public comment related to general county matters. Just as a reminder, we have three minutes, and please state your name and address. Welcome, DeAndre.
How you doing, everybody? Dee Jones, or DeAndre. Prefer Dee Jones, though. My address is 967 Tamarack Avenue, and just thankful to be here. Thankful to be alive. On Sunday, I fly to Las Vegas to speak at the Caesar's Palace and get an outstanding leadership award. I'm very excited about that, but also, I just got noticed that, can I get my time back? That's...
Yeah. It's a great song, though. Please continue.
All right, thank you. That's great. All right, so I'm getting another, I actually got hit up, and somebody told me that they want to give me another award in Las Vegas. So, that's two awards in Las Vegas, and that's June 14th through the 16th, which June 8th is going to be the $100,000 esports finals, so, at the DeVos place. And it's a cool thing, because I'm going to go to the DeVos place. It's an educators event that's going on over there, and I'm going to go pay my $49 to go network and speak to the biggest technology companies across the planet, and I'm going to go network, so I can get some resources to build our local economy up here, our county economy. And I'm just very excited to go network, because they also got some esports competitions that's going to go happen over there at the DeVos place from 2:00 to 5:00. So, I'm going to be sitting there networking all day, and then I'm going to go speak to the lieutenant governor and the governor today. So, I think the future is looking very bright for the guy Jones, man, and I'm very excited to do it here. I'm very excited to do it fair, just, and equitably, and give my all, my passion, my love, and being genuine, and staying authentic and true to who I am, because at the end of the day, I go to sleep just like everybody else, but I go to sleep in my own bed, so they always say, "You lay down in your own bed." And you lay down, and you lay your bed. So, yeah, I'm just very excited to do cool things, because one day, I'll be a billionaire. I don't doubt that. And then, I even got asked to be on a luxury international magazine, and that's pretty cool, and stuff like that for business. And then, I want to give my guy Stan Ponstein a shout-out, man. I really love you, man. I really genuinely have genuinely love for you, because all of the nice things that you say to me, you always coming up and shaking my hand. I mean, you're a Republican, and when we need, not just people to think of parties, but to think of reason what's best for people. You are the Republican on the board that I hear that actually speaks about not party or your own agenda, but what's best for the community. And I think that needs to be said, and I think Stan Ponstein sets a very high standard of what politics should be regardless of party, and I really genuinely appreciate him and his advocacy. And Walter Boujack, I appreciate you too, man. You're a cool dude. You say nice things to me, too. And Matt Coleman, I thank you for hitting me up and asking me, after I gave my number out, it's 6162730773, and you said nice things. And Dan Burle, you too. You're also a Republican that say nice things to me and help me out, and I look forward to giving back to your community and helping them with the Epic Games Fortnite educational tools. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Please come forward. State your name and address. Welcome.
Good morning. My name's Anita Steenson, and I'm with the U.S. Small Business Administration, Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience, and our main field office is in Atlanta, and I have my colleague here with me. Hi, my name is Russell Anderson. I'm with FEMA, here for the disasters that happened in August.
Welcome.
And we just wanted to take a few moments and introduce ourselves. I know you're aware of our presence here in your county, and together, we are resource partners, and I think you're all pretty aware of the resources that FEMA has for your community, and the main reason we're here is because the Small Business Administration, we're probably the misunderstood part of this equation. And we understand, our name, Small Business Administration, doesn't really alert people disaster declarations. And in fact, it's very important to get that word out to the public, because we work hand and glove with FEMA. And not only that, we work independently of FEMA. So often, people are applying for FEMA resources, and they will get a message. Many of the people in this community are accessing our amazing technology that FEMA has, as well as SBA, and applying online. So they're not getting really the benefit of the face-to-face assistance that we have. So they're getting a message telling them to apply with the SBA, and understandably, they're saying, "I'm not a business. Why would I do that?" And when they disregard that message, what they've done is they've locked themselves out of the possibility of getting additional FEMA resources. So it's very important that we get that message out to people. And, you know, the community has done a great job at getting the FEMA message out, but we're really, really hoping that the SBA part can be further disseminated and promoted on the social media of the county and the government. And we're asking that because it sounds like an internet scam, doesn't it? Like, "Oh, SBA helps homeowners and renters." And we do tie in the piece about how we're resource partners with FEMA. So that's the main ask that we're here to do. And, I mean, we have great resources. It's 2.5% loans, up to $500,000 for homeowners, an additional $100,000 for personal property, and so renters can access that. No interest and no payments for the first year, and that interest does not accrue. So there's no gotcha at the end of a year. We certainly take care of our businesses. In addition, they can access up to $2 million of loans, and those are loans at 4%, and nonprofits 2.375. The process is very streamlined, very easy, and, again, we just want to get that information out. We don't want people to prejudge themselves. I mean, even if they had just brush removal, we know the tornado was limited, but, I mean, if that's money out of their budget that they took, they should take advantage of getting either FEMA grants if they qualify, if they lost power, and food was damaged or lost out of their refrigerator, they may qualify for a FEMA grant to replace that food. If they don't, they may qualify for an SBA loan. I mean, that's 0% interest for a year. They could pay themselves back for a year.
Thank you. We let...
Thank you.
We gave our friends from the SBA a little bit of extra time here.
That's all I have to say.
And we appreciate it. Can you please leave your contact information with Lori? She's wearing the...
Oh, he's got it.
Rob's got it. Okay, great.
We gave it to everybody.
Thank you. That's great.
She kind of took my time, but I'm happy to be here, too.
Yeah, we'll consider that split. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for being here. This has been important to folks, especially in my district, Commissioner Antors, Commissioner Teals, some in Commissioner DeBoer, so we appreciate your work. Thank you.
And we did give Mr. Anderson's info to your clerk also.
Yes, thank you.
He's your direct contact if you need him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comments? Good morning. Please state your name and your address, please.
Good morning. My name is Rodney Perry, Sr. I'm not clear about my address just right now, because my home has been illegally foreclosed upon by the Kent County Treasurer. I am here to make public and make all of you aware the violations of law that have been committed by the Treasurer. Property foreclosure requires a taxing unit be in compliance with the General Property Tax Act. Mr. McGregor gave me a letter assuring me that, and convincing me, that both my properties will be withheld from the 2021 foreclosure. He lied. That's in violation of the General Property Tax Act. I have already provided the Deputy County Clerk documents to show and prove the claims that I'm making. In fact, he has those things with him now. The city assessor never complied with the Michigan Tax Tribunal Court order. The proof is in their own admission of the errors, which the county treasurer uses to calculate property tax. He foreclosed anyway. Gave me the letter dated February 11, 2021, and used that as a deceptive tool in violation of the Michigan Penal Code, MCL 750, 218, Item 11, violation of the General Property Tax Act, and a criminal violation. Mr. McGregor provided no notice to me of that, which was a violation of my due process rights. He did get a signature from a gentleman on January 7, 2022. Only problem is, the gentleman has been dead since 2011, so that didn't work. To cover up these acts, he was untruthful about the position of the Kent County Probate Register, saying that they were on board with him. I had the email from the Probate Register. That was a lie. He duped the court in the petition foreclosed by committing willful fraud. He withheld that information that he'd already given me the letter from the court in order to get a favorable ruling. I presented that to your county administrator. I haven't heard anything back. Maybe I will soon. These errors, the conditions that I'm able to get my property back, Mr. McGregor actually extorted the situation, because he said I had to do some things that are illegal based on the General Property Tax Act. I had to agree not to challenge the assessment evaluation up through 2022. I had to agree to pay his attorney fees, and I've done absolutely nothing wrong, absolutely nothing wrong. I didn't pay my property tax, because my property tax was admittedly wrong, but Mr. McGregor said he didn't care. He was in the business of collecting money, not concerned about who was right or wrong as to why it's collected. Now, my grandson and I were getting put up in the street. My home has no mortgage. My land has no mortgage. The only thing I have is an erroneous property tax. I offered to pay a $70,000-plus bill. He rejected the payment. He rejected the payment.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. You indicated that you submitted something to the staff, so we'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
And thank you. Welcome back.
Yes. Daniel Scott, once again. I have very sad news. Since 3/20 East Fulton has been shuttered because of Mr. Gordon's death. Planned Parenthood, I call it Planned Genocide, 4/20 East Cherry, just within a mile or two from where we're sitting, has begun to do what they call the surgical murders. This is what it looks like. People behind me can see what it looks like with the picture on my back. If you support this genocidal organization, the scripture says you're an accomplice to murder. The founder of Planned Genocide, Margaret Sanger, said this, "We don't want the word to get out that we want to exterminate the Negro population. They are human weeds, reckless breeders, spawning human beings who never should have been born. I accepted an invitation to talk to the women's branch of the Ku Klux Klan. She was a personal friend of Adolf Hitler." Eugenics, they both believed in eugenics. The founder of Planned Parenthood. Look it up for yourself. Racist quote spoken by Margaret Sanger. Last month was Black History Month. Every month should be Black History Month, I guess, but in Michigan, the last two years, the murder of black babies in the womb have been the number-one killer of black children. By the way, this is a beautiful picture of a baby that was saved from being murdered at 3/20 East Fulton, when it was still murdering babies. My friend is holding the baby, who actively interceded for these children on the sidewalk I don't know what you can do to stop this murderous genocide just a mile or two from here. We should all be heartbroken. They dispensed the pill as well, the murder pill, which is now not only killing babies, but killing the women. How can God bless our county, our city, our state, when we allow the murder of our most I plead with you, do all you can. You have a much stronger voice than many of us. If you do, God will bless you. Don't take money from Planned Parenthood. I know how it works. Politicians back and forth.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? Please come forward. Welcome. State your name, and you have three minutes.
Okay, voy a tratar de traducirme yo, porque pues no me van a entender en español. Mi nombre es Gema, y vivo aquí en el condado de Kent. So I'm going to try to speak in English, see if you understand my work in English. I live here in Kent County. Mi nombre es Gema. My name is Gema, and estaba aquí para agradecer que diez de los 21 comisionados firmaron la carta en apoyo a licencias para todos. So I'm here to say thank you to the 10 of the 21 commissioners that signed on to the letter of support for drivers' licenses for all. Esta ley va a ayudar a más de 100,000 personas que en estos momentos están yendo a trabajar, pero no tienen la licencia de conducir. So this letter of support would help the passage of drivers' licenses for all. Bill, they would allow people to go to work every day, like they do to be in the industries that immigrants are in Michigan. Entonces estamos aquí para decirles que los demás pueden también firmarla, que es muy importante que nuestros comisionados de este condado apoyen esta ley. So we're here to encourage the rest of the commissioners to sign on to this letter. It will be very important for our county to have people going to work and have the license that they need so they can go on to with their lives, and also the safety of everyone. Estoy hablando de que la seguridad de todos es bien importante, porque como quiera estamos trabajando para la economía de nuestro condado. So it's very important to see that people can get to work, and it will help the economy in our county. Otra vez les quiero decir que faltan, si mi matemática no está mal, nueve más comisionados para firmar. So we have the letter, the el comisionado Diaz la introdujo. We have the letter that Commissioner Diaz proposed, and for you to assign the rest that hasn't been assigned. Gracias.
Thank you. Gracias. Mi español es muy mal, so thank you for adding in the English. Your English is far better than my Spanish, so thank you for being here.
I'm going to try to interpret her as well.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hola, mi nombre es Neri Dáviles.
My name is Neri Dáviles.
En adición a lo que dijo la compañera, es poco el apoyo que recibimos en cuanto el apoyo a la carta de licencias para todos.
In addition to what I just said, it feels like not enough support for the letter.
Cuando es una oportunidad de mostrar que también les importa lo que el pueblo trabajador está sufriendo.
Es an opportunity to show your support for the people in the county that works every day.
Porque nuestras familias están saliendo a trabajar cada día al igual que las de ustedes, porque tenemos una familia para la cual trabajar, pero con la gran diferencia que nuestro dinero, que lo que ganamos, que lo que trabajamos, se está yendo a pagar altas sumas de aseguranzas para nuestros autos, porque no tenemos una licencia válida del estado.
I'm going to try to remember. So nosotros, we need to go to work every day, just like you and your families, but most of our income will go to high insurance payments, because we don't have a driver's license from the state. So I could add that we do have licenses from our countries. She didn't say that, so I said that.
Y eso está privando a nuestros hijos de no estar participando en diferentes actividades en las cuales ellos pueden tomar ventaja.
And that prevents our kids from having other opportunities to go into other activities. They will help our families and the community.
I'll interrupt you for just one second. I'm going to just give you guys another 90 seconds on top of the original because of the translation. I want to make sure you have an opportunity to speak, so thank you.
Y nuestros niños, al igual que los de todos los que estamos aquí, tienen el derecho a beneficiarse de cualquier programa que esté disponible para ellos.
And our kids also have the right to benefit from all the wonderful things that the county offers around, and they're shy from that because of licenses.
Porque yo creo que no hay un padre que no tiene grandes esperanzas en el desempeño de su propio hijo.
Because I believe that parents have hopes for our kids to have good and better opportunities.
Y creemos que el futuro de todo un país está en las manos de nuestros niños que están siendo bien educados.
And we believe that the future of our country is in the hands of kids that would have access to all this education or programs.
Pero también los padres necesitamos una licencia para salir a trabajar y proveer para los niños.
That's why we need the license to provide for the kids and for the kids to have these opportunities.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? I don't see any. Thank you. We will move on to Agenda Item Number 10, which is the Administrator's Report, and I'll call on Administrator Vanderburg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple items today. Did want to mention that one of the boards that I represent the county on is the Grand Rapids Downtown Development Authority, and yesterday we voted to approve money towards Phase 1 of the Design Services to Replace the Calder Deck. So back in 2017, the city, the county, and DGRI Downtown Grand Rapids Inc. approved a master plan for the Calder. It's been delayed for a few years. Really, the first step, and the only step that action was taken on yesterday, was to do the Design Services to lift off the entire surface of the plaza and replace the membrane with a waterproof membrane. You may have been down in the garage on days when there's a lot of leaking, and so it's a major maintenance thing that needs to occur prior to some of the other improvements happening. I haven't really reviewed that overall master plan yet, but I'll get it, and I'll send it out to the board so you can take a look at what's been planned. I know they do plan on a significant amount of engagement, since the plan is seven years old, as they move forward with that. Also, just wanted to say, I thought our time in Lansing is well spent. We did our first county day at the Capitol, and a number of commissioners and staff went, met with a number of our legislators, and really appreciated that. I thought it was, again, a day well spent in advocacy for county positions. And then, I think, I just wanted to thank Ben and his team for all the work done on the Parks Master Plan. It's a big lift every five years, but as he mentioned, I think it's key to note, it's something we have to have in order to apply for Natural Resources Trust Fund or Land and Water and Conservation Grant Funds. But with the same token, sometimes it's hard to know exactly what's going to happen in four or five years, so it is flexible as well. So it isn't like when this comes up for adoption, you'd be adopting something that's etched in concrete. It is something that can be malleable, as maybe funding sources are realized maybe unexpectedly, or some of those kinds of things that can change a course. With that, that's all I have today.
Okay. Thank you, Al. We'll move on to Item 11, Reports. There is one report that I'll deliver on behalf of Chair Steck. Our standing rules indicate that the Minority Vice Chair shall serve as the Vice Chair of one of the standing committees. So Chair Steck is appointing Minority Vice Chair McLeod as the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee. Wanted to relay that on behalf of Stan. Thank you, Commissioner McLeod. Does anyone else have any reports? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Breen. We had a substance abuse advisory board that I sat on for the Lake Shore Regional Entity a week and a half ago. I think I reported after one of the meetings where one of the surveys showed that there was an uptick of marijuana use between the kids ages 16 to 20. And when they dug deeper into that, found out that for the uptick was, the main reason given is that we see our parents using it, so it can't be all bad. So the surveys, I mean, they survey our population a lot of times to find trends on what's happening. The good news is that the usage in that age group for marijuana has tapered off and actually is starting to go down a little bit. The troubling thing is, though, what's now replacing fentanyl as our major concern is this new breed of methane drugs, which are 100% more powerful than prescription Narcan or Narco, which should be disturbing to everyone, because they're no longer denying where this stuff's coming from. It's not a backyard meth maker. These are pharmaceutical-grade methamphetamines being made in labs, and they're coming across our borders. It's not just the south border, it's the north border. And this is a threat, where just a little grain of this mixed with stuff will be far powerful than fentanyl is today. And it's a growing, emerging issue, and, you know, if we don't get ahead of it, we always look at ways of, when someone ODs, how to revive them. Very little talk on what we do to make sure that that stuff's not getting into this country, and it's flowing in. Every day, the border officers are seizing stuff in trucks, and like I said, you don't need a lot of this stuff. You know, some of this stuff, just a small package of it has a street value well in excess of $1 million, so. I wish I had some good news. I wish I had some good news. The Substance Abuse Committee seldom does because we're tracking those things. So there's gonna be a new surveying coming out for parents, and it'll be targeted to try to zero in on that if the kids aren't using marijuana anymore, hopefully they've decided that drugs aren't the way to do it, but the fear is that there might be an alternative that's being used. So, thank you, Chair Green.
Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein. Any other reports from commissioners? Commissioner Pakel.
Thank you, Chair Green. It's a little borderline between a report and general welfare, but the Grand Valley Metro Council has been part of organizations for a visit from the Dutch cycling industry, and there is today and tomorrow a group of folks from the Dutch cycling community that are here in town, interested in sort of looking around to see what the cycling infrastructure is. There is a roundtable that is open to public officials. It's tomorrow. If anybody on the board here is interested in that, let me know, and I can pass along that information about that event. But that was coming from the Grand Valley Metro Council Policy Committee. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner. Another opportunity to recognize our strong heritage with the Dutch people in West Michigan. Any other reports? I don't see any. We'll move to Item Number 12, Commissioner miscellaneous. I'll call on Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair. Question for our Administrator Al Vandenberg. They reported on the news this change for the Calder Plaza. Specifically, what kind of changes are they talking about for the Calder?
I haven't really reviewed the plan in much detail because they're going to basically get input and change some things, but there's a number of amenities they plan to put in different locations on the plaza, so it wouldn't quite be the wide-open space that it's been for so long. The idea is to make it more appealing for people to come and hang out on even when there aren't events.
Okay. And then, I also want to make one more comment about our delegation that went to Lansing this week. I do believe that was a historical event. I don't think that Kent County has ever taken a delegation of commissioners to Lansing to bring forward our concerns, and being a part of that, felt it was very, very effective and glad whoever put that together, you know, had that concept. And I don't know that any other county has ever done this, so, again, I think that was a historic event.
Thank you. I think we had Commissioner Ponstein.
Go ahead. He had his hand up first.
Okay, we'll go Commissioner Pakel, then Commissioner Ponstein.
I'll make it quick. I just wanted to say last week I attended a celebration in honor of Mark Harold, who officially retired on March 6th as the Chief of the East Grand Rapids Department of Public Safety. He had a 40-year career in law enforcement, 21 of which was in East Grand Rapids. I had the pleasure of working with Chief Harold when I was a city commissioner in East Grand Rapids and wish him all the best in retirement.
Thank you, Commissioner Pakel. We join you in thanking Chief Harold for his service. Commissioner Ponstein.
Mine's not gonna be that short, so that's why I went. So, first of all, in your mailboxes back there, and I've been talking about this until I was blue in the face, and probably almost a couple of years, but it's a little brochure from our county clerk about home title theft and things that they're going to be doing to try to assist the residents of this county if it ever happens to them. And I don't know if it's gonna solve the problem, but it's, you know, we've gotta do something, and maybe sometimes something is just educating the people of what's going on because you get these ads all night long, all evening long, about, it's just lined up to scare people about one thing or another, whether it's ID theft or home title theft or you name it, and I just appreciate the work of the clerk and the staff on this issue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, please continue.
Yeah, so I've got about three or four more. So we always hear about all the sports teams winning, the normal basketball team, football team, and, you know, all these high, visible sports in our community. Sat on a school board for a long time, a lot of people, you know, know that. And I think one of the struggles we had in the late 90s when we built that giant high school that can have over 2,500 kids in there is how do we make sure kids don't get left behind? And I'm proud of Granville, we always tried to do different things for different people. One of those is that we're, along with some Lake Shore districts, I think started the club bowling for that. The Michigan High School Athletic Association has now recognized that as a state sport. I just want to congratulate the Granville Boys Bowling Team for winning the state championship a week ago. You know, a lot of people think it's, you know, how hard can it be to throw a 16-pound ball down the alley? I think they make it look pretty easy, so I just wanted to congratulate them. It's probably something people don't hear. A lot of school districts do not have those teams, but there's a lot of them around the state that do. On that same kind of theme of things that we tried to do, I think Granville and Forest Hills School District were the first ones that brought in what we now call First Robotics in Granville. Not only do we have a high school team, but we have a middle school team and an elementary team. The high school team, and in fact, all three of those have qualified for the state playoffs, I guess is what you would call it. Our high school team went to the First Robotics Canadian Pacific Regional Tournament, which is an international tournament of the teams there. We made it to the championship finals. We came up a little short, runner-up, I think is still a huge, you know, accomplishment for these ladies and gentlemen that were part of that team. They did win the sustainability award, showing what they do as a team, and it's, you know, pretty extensive. So if you've never seen a competition, there's a lot of schools in Kent County now that have robotics competitions. I know the Granville voters voted in on a millage to add a new building that has a competition arena for robotics. I think that's probably the first one in the state that it's specifically designed for those types of things. So, moving on, just a couple other quick things. The Granville Tree Board for Arbor Day partnering with the City of Granville. Any resident of that town can get a matching, I don't wanna say grant, matching money to plant a tree in their yard. The Tree Board will assist in all those plannings, so just go to the city website for more information on that. Also, I had an opportunity last weekend. I was joined by Commissioner Wally Boujack. I was at the NCFCA Regional Debate Competition, and for those that don't know that acronym, it's the National Christian Forensic and Communications Association Tournament. Grace University, right there in Wyoming, which used to be in my district, and I think it's now in Ivan's District, hosted that regional competition. 120 competitors, I think, were there. Talk about Hotel Motex benefit, we always hear about sports and other events, but events like this that colleges bring in fill those rooms also. So just hats off to all the kids that competed in that competition. I think Wally got to judge the Lincoln Douglas Debate Style, where I had kind of the team finals, and, you know, I think it was enjoyable doing that. And then, the last thing I just want to bring up, Al, and this might be for you. There's a lot going on in this world, and you just have to turn the TV on, and I think as county commissioners, we have departments that run themselves, we're not involved in the day-to-day operations. In your newsletter, I'm just making a suggestion, maybe some of these timely topics that come up is the, I think the county commission as a whole needs to be a little bit more abreast. And I'll give two examples. They're not examples that we have to go, but it's just an example of we should be more informed of what's going on around us. I think someone just mentioned that, you know, what's said on TV, I don't even know if TVs have reporters anymore, they just read off press releases. A lot of times, it's abbreviated, and we're not getting the full story. But one thing I did hear, I, you know, I know our health department's been very proactive on measles vaccinations. There seems to be a outbreak going across nationwide. The closest one to us is City of Chicago and one of their detention centers for the migrants, there's been an outbreak in measles there. And I'm just asking, you know, we as a county are taking people into, is this something that we're monitoring? Is this something the public should be worried about? I know in the past, we've had measles outbreaks because a lot of people just aren't getting the vaccines anymore, but maybe an update on what's going on? Is this a threat that we need to worry about? I think Chicago is pretty close if that's our nearest outbreak. And then the other thing, just on completely the other end, we're constantly adding road patrols. We want to add more judges, more people in the prosecuting's office, but for the past three years, retail crime on the 28th Street corridor is just getting out of hand, and it's not waning. And these people are getting more and more aggressive in their tactics. It's only gonna take one time that some of these people that are coming in these stores and just stealing in broad daylight and walking out the doors, if one of them has a gun, you know, it could easily go sour quick, but, you know, it's just disturbing because this is costing our businesses, some of them well over $100,000 in losses. These aren't petty thefts. These are highly organized, and they go from store to store. You know, they've got pictures, the stores are sharing, they hit us today, the next day, they hit this place, and something's gotta be done. And I think these are the types of issues that the commission's gotta be aware of because those two issues are departments that, you know, we oversee. I'm not being critical of anyone in those departments, but we've gotta stay abreast on what we can do and be proactive if they do need more money to attack these things because they're affecting the quality of life in our communities. So, sorry, I was long-winded. I'll just yield my time at the next meeting to someone else. Thank you.
You don't have any time to yield, Commissioner, but we appreciate it.
Sorry about that.
My constituents in Rockford might not like it, but I will join you in congratulating the Granville Bulldogs on their successes, so. Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. I'll remind commissioners that we're all invited to the Conservation District Dinner next week, it's on the 21st. There is a series of social justice activities taking place today to honor the legacy and the activism of Cesar Chavez, and there is a social justice parade at 11 o'clock, a community gathering follows that, and then a luncheon, a unity luncheon to follow that. And this is all to take place this month, the birth month of the legendary Cesar Chavez. The other thing is, another holiday is St. Patrick's Day, and the parade is Saturday late morning. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? I don't see any. The Chair Steck will probably regret giving the gavel to an Irishman on the meeting before St. Patrick's Day, but I did want to expand on what Commissioner Hennessy said briefly. Sunday is St. Patrick's Day, and in my faith tradition, we celebrate the feast of St. Patrick, but it's also a time when we honor the contributions of Irish-Americans, and I did want to share very briefly an interesting story. The first Irish came here about, to Grand Rapids about a little less than 100 years, 200 years ago, 1835, and most of them came here to build the canal, which ended up, those of you that know GR history, the canal ended up being a big folly at the end, but they found work there and they couldn't find housing because of discrimination, so they had to live in a shanty town down there where the boats docked. I found a really interesting story. Commissioner Hennessy knows the history on the west side of the Irish, the Polish, and the Germans. Last year, unfortunately, closed down St. James Church, but that was built by the Irish immigrants, and it had a tremendous legacy there. I found one other piece that I'm gonna share, I found from the Cascade Township Historical Society, and maybe Commissioner Boujack knows this, but there was a man named Edward Lennon who was one of the first Irish to settle out in Cascade Township. Came here in 1836. They, he and one of the guys that came here from Ireland walked to Ionia, and walked, which I find crazy from Cascade Township, but they walked and they purchased 80 acres each of land, and that land today is the Kent County, the Jerrylard Ford International Airport. So, just wanted to, I could've gone on longer, but Commissioner Ponstein took all my time. So I will, I'll leave it with that. I want to wish you guys a happy St. Patrick's Day, and I just want to recognize those contributions by those folks and all other immigrants to Kent County. With that, seeing no other comments, I will call on Commissioner DeBoer for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn, subject to the call of the chair, to Thursday, March 28, at 8:30.
All right, it's moved and supported. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you.